I think Rachel said she could come, so why don't we just. I expect this to be a relatively short reading, so. We'll wait a couple of minutes to see if somebody else shows or dials in. I thought Rachel and Donna both made positive family emails in response and.
Also, I feel like Jill said something without coming to.
As if we can get on your busy calendar now as chair of the finance committee.
Nice.
You wouldn't believe the homework assignments they've got that is new. Really? Oh, my. There's simplistic ways to look at this and there are complex ones. You must be looking at the capital program committee now.
No, 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 no. This is just the the short term rental.
No, thanks.
Wait, that 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 will. That will. Anyway, that's uh. Is Caroline coming to this meeting?
She she actually submitted in the in these two puffs that are very long. Like two brief little edits, right? So can I send that out to everybody? Good afternoon, Donna. Good afternoon, Dean. Nice to see everybody, both online and here in trailer. I'll call the order, the town council study committee meeting for Wednesday, October eighth. I'm going to do this. And I guess we have. The only vote we have to, can I have a a motion to accept the agenda, please?
No move.
All in favor? Alrighty. We have two items on the agenda today. Oops, well, for for I say that, I hope everybody had a pleasant summer. I I started some of this work on the on the. Final report early in the summer and then didn't look at it for about three months, so. A while to get back going here, but. Anyway. What I would like to do is in terms of our sort of. Remaining steps as a committee. Is kind of get this thing edited and and approved so that all of you committee members are. Comfortable and happy with it, submit it to Libby and the select board and then. I think we. We have to decide what you, what we, what you would like to do going forward, if anything. So maybe our first. If if there are any. Edits, comments, questions. Typos, I mean, we can, we can go through it page by page, we can just.
Are you going to continue to? Fill out areas that you would let fly?
Well, to be perfectly honest, no. You know, and if there if there are, but. I was not going to. Curtis, if if there are areas that you think are too thin or too light, and I'm sure that they're. Not sure, but no, I. I my goal here was to try to. Describe what we've done, describe what the what the steps we took.
Correct.
Give someone a sense of of all the work that we did. Obviously, the two charters are at the end, and so they're, that's sort of the biggest work product that that we did with the Collins folks. But beyond that, I'm not sure I wanted to make it into more of an encyclopedia than it already is, so. If if you, if anybody, like I said, if anybody feels like there's something that really should be fleshed out more. Happy to do that, I would, you know, but I would ask that perhaps you do some of the fleshing.
Well, I only note give this a highlight on. Section, the conclusion, need a concluding sentence, so, I don't know, we have to write it, or you had it.
So always, so give me what? So what what where is that and what?
It's on conclusion. Those four. When it says. Something conclusion.
Okay, so right now. Do you feel and do you feel that the last, the last sentence in the last paragraph, Curtis, isn't a sufficient?
Maybe I don't have the current report.
I think it's pretty conclusive. We're gonna. Dissolve them following the submission of the report.
There's. Yours as here. Now. So there's this.
Oh, so I do not have we.
Alright, I did.
I'll print it.
Well, here's actually, this this is this is.
The next.
Okay, so that's so.
So my report was incomplete.
Okay. Anyone else out there? I want to, hi Caroline, welcome.
Hi Joe.
I got your your editor in there.
Thank you.
Any other, yeah.
I think it's really good. I I was just gonna say. I think if we wanted to, we might. Make a reference. Probably in that. The third section, the town council study committee section. We may just make a reference somewhere at the end that. All of our meetings are still available on YouTube. And minutes are available if people really wanna. Take a deep dive into the discussions and things that were had, they certainly are. More than welcome to. But it's a resource that exists. Other than that, I thought it was. Pretty spot on. And that's nitpicking. Okay.
The only thing I might say is. It did a lot of work. We documented all of this. And it led to us having a indicative non binding vote at the town meeting like there's a last spring. That was very close. And now we have brought. To conclusion, all of our work product to doing that. Do we want at all? To lay out possible pathways? On another process, or are we just done?
And you know. Personally, I think we're done. I mean, I, you know, again, speaking for myself, I'm done. I think that we did do a lot of work. I think we. Did good research. I think we documented the information that we gathered on the various forms of government. I thought that, you know, we we came up with pretty well tailored charters for the town and the and the county. I think we talked about this the last time we were together. I think. I think the thing that I learned, I want to speak for everybody, but. Is I think educating and convincing voters is a much bigger and more laborious task than I think we realize and. Just having five info sessions, two in the hall and two what in the spring or three in the spring. We didn't reach enough people, we didn't convince enough people. I don't think, I just don't think we got in in, you know, sort of amount front of head, front of mind, sort of understanding on the part of voters and. You know, the the turkeys didn't want to vote to Thanksgiving, so.
If you recall, I sent you the. Town is trying to redo the island home. With the opinion survey online. And. Uh, I think. Reaching the people who are affected is has been difficult. But I'm wondering if we should. Recommend an opinion survey. I assume this is going to the select board, they're gonna receive it, thank us for our work. Do they put it? On the next town meeting agenda? Or if. There are so many people who are probably in favor of the change. Who don't go to town meeting, and that's where we always run short, but. Again, the. Select board, I guess, is running this opinion. I don't know if you've all seen it. I certainly.
I completed it.
And whether we could do. As a follow up or even as part of a recommendation to the select board when we commit, submit the report. That they consider doing a similar opinion. Survey, which would be their initiative, perhaps, and we wouldn't have to do. So building on that. I think, I think we are done. However, I think adding. Just a few more sentences or something can make this work live on. But if we just submit the report, say we did all this work, we studied the. And that's it, it'll just collect us. But if we. Possibly put in here, sort of the other next steps that could be done. By the and the Curtis, it could be the survey would be a good way. But I think we need to almost have just one final. Well, doesn't the select board have to close this out? I mean. We're reporting to them. Does it go back to the next town meeting for a vote based on our report?
Well, we, you know. We we didn't do the one, I mean, the one. Action step, you will, at the end of your article, Curtis, was that we would, that the committee would submit a an article to a future. We're not gonna, you know, we can't do that that special time meeting because it's already.
No.
The what it will call is closed. And I don't know in terms of everybody's time, effort and interest in being on the committee, whether we all want to hang around until next May and try again. But personally, I don't think trying again, you know, getting an article on the. On the town meeting warrant for next year. Would be necessarily any more effective if we didn't. I don't know, educate, communicate, promote the idea to the to the voters of the town. I I think that. Again, speaking for myself, I I think we way underestimated how much work that was to really get. You know, a lot of people motivated to go to town meeting and go for it. I think that's a fair thing. But I but I do think. We really want to give this select board something of.
Well, you know, I'm, let's put that, do we still only need ten voters to get an article? Ten signatures?
And you gotta get it done by November.
Well, I know, so, yeah, so. What if I go back? And get ten voters to sign a town meeting article. To. Vote on the recommendations of the town council study committee report. To establish a town council. Be a very pot, and then. And then if they say, well, okay, you have to put it on the warrant. Then we could proceed to the opinion survey. And to do some of the outreach meetings that some of us are like, I'll go to the builders or they'll go to builders and. Don't, all those guys should want a town council. They're all too busy to go to town meeting. They really need the ability to make their concerns heard and. The fifteen minutes it takes in the town council. Is something. A concerned. Citizen could invest in. So I'm I'm prepared to.
Well, I mean.
Take to do that. That article to make them look at it again, just for the hell of it. Rather than drop it.
So I think you can do all this. Caroline, you've been waiting there. Sorry, I just noticed your hand was up.
Thanks, I I um. I, this may go without saying, but I I'm remembering very specifically and clearly that. We had wanted to. Forgo a sense of the meeting vote because we knew that we were not yet. We had not yet completed the outreach. We hadn't even started the outreach aside from. A couple of public sessions, and so that's how I remember it, that. We had planned to do outreach that then the select board chair. Really strongly suggested that we take it to the meeting and get a sense of the meeting vote, sense of the ballot vote. Which we did not wish to do. And then it came back to us that that was really. Not a recommendation, but. The wish of the select board.
They buy a select board.
Yeah, so I just, I I really do recall that aspect of it, so it's not that we underestimated. In my memory of it, it's more that we had planned this whole other leg. To complete our work. We hadn't even written up a report. We didn't even have a product, if you will, to. Let people to review. We had two speakers at town meeting. Ahead of the sense of the meeting vote, and I just don't think that that was a fair shake that we were given. But it's not because we hadn't planned it properly, so I just want to emphasize that.
You know, and your and your, the text that you submitted in the report. Outline that that position or that comment. You know, Curtis, and I. I think doing a, you know. I think it should be a citizens article. I don't think it should be a select board article, so if you're, you know, if you're motivated, that's great. You know, you've got, you've got this and the and the charter all all done, which, you know, can be lifted and and used for an article.
I'll work on that, just. You know, let's wrap it up, submit our report. But I will. Get a, I'll get ten people or twenty five to sign. Well, okay, but. That would be. Better. You know, as Caroline's saying, and and as I feel to. Bring it to a different. Level of conclusion than just to submit it and say, okay, well done, goodbye. Because dust gathers dust.
No, it does.
So I will make that commitment to the committee and to the, anyone watching that I'm gonna. Prepare a citizens article to. Bring this back. To. The next annual town meeting.
Let's ask a question, so what? What's the action they're asking? Town meeting to do?
I haven't figured out the words quite yet, but essentially to accept the report and implement the recommendation. To establish a town council form of government for the town of Nantucket.
So in that, you know, in that paraphrasing, what you said, that you're basically saying they're gonna. Do just what the non binding vote did, which was to move forward with converting to town council.
We now have a report as a reference that will be available. That is more complete than other data.
I just. I have. Concerns that. If you start and you file in November for a discussion in May. To get the education done that's needed and to get to those people. You're gonna need resources to do it. But to get it done in that timeframe. I think it's gonna be. Extraordinarily difficult.
But the alternative is to let it go and not do it at all, man. Well, what kind of resources do you think are needed? To do that, five, six months, six months?
Well, I I think you'd need another committee. I mean, I, you know, I think this, you know, we've spent roughly two years, not quite two years doing this. I I've been upfront, I would like to retire, resign, whatever. And maybe some other people feel the same, but you know, there's there's nothing stopping. Some of us from going out and sort of forming a working group and. If you put an article on the, on the, submit an article for the warrant, there's no reason you can't have a citizens committee that's available to. Talking about all the work that we did and why we think it's a good idea.
Volunteers to join. An ad hoc group.
But I think, I think you need, I. I think what you're getting at is, I I think if we're gonna be on the ballot, or rather on the warrant. I think we need to have more information sessions, more more outreach to the public. And I'm not sure how much is enough, but I think we need, you need to do more and otherwise it'll just. I mean, it's just.
So maybe when you finish the support. And it gets given to the select board. At that point in time, just explain that and say we'd like the select board. Or one of the recommendations of this committee, having done its initial work. Is we'd like the select board to form a new committee with new resources.
I I think it's gotta be a citizen. I don't think, I think, I think you want to take the select, but I think that actually is an important step is to take the select board out of it.
Yeah.
And it really ought, it really ought to be a. Some, I don't know what what legal form, but an ad hoc committee of citizens. I mean, all due respect to the select board, they gave us the money, blah, blah, blah. I don't think individually they were all 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 that enthusiastic about it and. They gave us the time, they gave us the money, we we did our work, but. I I think it ought to be a citizens, you know, independent of the.
I'm in agreement. And. You know. I will go home. Have my vodka sonic and work work on something, but. Jeff. You know. Frankly. Since I started this a long time ago, I'm not willing to let a report go in a drawer and die. So I'll fight and scrap and I I, if you vote me down or vote us down, okay.
No, no, I. Again, I.
I mean, you guys were early too.
I'm not det- deterring you from doing it. I just think asking town meeting. In May. To take. The step to go to town council based upon what we've seen, the fact that we've sat dormant for this time. Where we learned clearly that people didn't have the information needed to make that decision. My concern. Is that. In the truncated time window again, you're not gonna get. That information out to get people to go. Without. A plan already in place, resources in place. And in the long run. The more times you ask people the question, they're gonna fatigue of just hearing it, and they're gonna turn it out. And. It happens here, it happens a lot where. You see it, and I think if if you go back for another bite at the apple, I don't think the report has to gather dust. But I think. If you really want to see it go forward. You have to find a group of like minded citizens. To put the time, energy, effort and resources behind it. To know before you go into that room that you have the people that will prevail.
Well, you know, interestingly enough. I don't. See, I would not. Put a lot of energy into November, December, January or February. I start. Working real hard and spending real money in March or April. To. Keep it in people's minds. As they go and. You know. There are a few of us who are willing to go to every committee and in town and and talk. There are people who will, I already have three ads drawn up. That I'll pay for. And you, I'm allowed to pay for an ad if I put my name on it. I think. I'm not asking the committee to do it, but. You know. I'm really ready to give it. Best effort and hopefully there are a few people available who would join that. And reach out to every group you can. Every way you can. And at least. If you're gonna go down, go down in flames, don't, don't just go quiet.
Well, I don't think it's go down in flames, because. I I think notwithstanding that people get. Exhausted by things. Sometimes political change just takes time.
Oh, sure.
And it was pretty darn close last time with no real. You know. Takes time. Also, I. But but Caroline and. Yeah, Caroline, you've been waiting, sorry.
Thanks. I'm I'm just thinking relative to what you guys are saying that. For really complex ideas, I. I I've noticed that the town has. You know, they use their communications staff or maybe some PR consultants that they have to make those little films. Like when there's a big vote coming up about. You know, huge expenditure of money. Whether it's, you know, moving a a plant across the island or. And and those things, because it's a lot of money and it's complex stuff. It really requires professional level communications that, I mean, we're a band of citizens. We don't have that expertise and Curtis, you may have some great ads. I'm sure you do, because I know you have some of this talent yourself, but. I just think that. Obviously, we can't ask the town to sponsor that, but it is necessary for bigger ideas and maybe that is. Maybe it is a band of citizens that has to raise some money to. Make a little film, like a little one or two minute film that explains it because. Public information sessions and flyers and ads in the paper. It maybe isn't dynamic enough to get the complexity across. I mean, look how long it took us, two years of meeting, we're meeting every other week for two hours. And we're a bunch of smart people and we had to have a consultant to to explain it to us so that we can understand. And then it's our job to get that enthusiasm across to. The voters and. There's a big distance between the the. Cup and the lip there that I think actually in this day and age requires some professional. Communication skills that we we shouldn't expect ourselves to have. I don't know, what what do you guys think about that?
Well, I have a question. If the town has the PR people. Couldn't we ask the town to have their PR people? Prepare an objective. Evaluation of the proposal. For the citizens. They're paying them all, they use them when they need them, maybe this is another way to do it. Be a fun thing to ask them to have their PR people prepare. Survey or whatever.
I mean. I I guess I come out, you know, the. The the sort of the next steps, as I would say it is. We submit the report so that we sort of bring closure to this group of people. Curtis, if it's you or if it's another, a a a set of the group of us. I think you need some help. I think forming some sort of a. Citizens working group to. Support the submission of an article at the next year's town meeting would. I think you just can't do it yourself.
See who's interested.
See who's interested, yeah, and then. You know, as as Jeff, if Jeremy says, you know, you may not, we didn't win the first time, we might not win the second time. I think the question is whether you can continue to attract people to the idea and. You know, certainly town meeting isn't getting any better, so. The reason, you know, the reasons for. Why we put this, why this group came to into being are still there, so. Any, any other, I mean. Just getting back to the nitty gritty, are there any other sections, typos? Places where you really feel it's too thin, doesn't, doesn't make the point, anything? And if you want to send me.
I'll hear you so nicely. The only thing I thought with the report is some of the weaknesses or the strengths were. That we talked about, there are some that maybe you don't want to put in or not, but I did that. And there are some just spelling errors and names.
Spell check didn't catch them.
No. I, I really. The only other thing I would add is I I liked Caroline's edit. I would have, I underlined a spot where I added a language that. When we were doing our public sessions and even leading up to, we didn't have a charter for reference. And I think that was a big part of the outreach. I hear what you're saying about a survey. But in trying to think of what the questions are and whether they would be leading one way or another, or who is even developing it, what is the outcome that you're looking for? And I don't even think a survey is gonna get anywhere. I think it's the education part of the actual charter. So. I think people needed something more concrete to say whether they agreed with particulars or not, and we didn't have that. And I agree, two people standing up and speaking. On a point is one thing, but you're asking them to vote on a whole charter that hasn't even been presented or drafted yet. I think that was part of our downfall as well. I also do not think that. There should be any involvement in the select board of the town in any future steps. I think this. What we did in this committee was a lot of work. We got a lot of data, we had great consultants, we drafted a charter, maybe there's still tweaks to be made. But I don't see how there's going to be support for this in any way that's strong enough from a government group. I think it just requires a bunch of people sitting down and really. Taking the time and scratching at it and then getting out there grassroots. And you can't do that in a town open meeting law environment. Unfortunately. And. I would be hesitant, as Jeff kind of said, to just throw another article at town meeting that says, do you want people to go for this? Because they're just gonna say no, and that's further going to dig the heels in of the people. Couldn't make an effort to say, well, see, look, you got a ballot no, and now you got two town meeting knows, we're really done with this. I I think it's, I I just. I think that they have other things that they're focusing on in the form of government that they already have. That they're not gonna put a focus on something that they're not putting forth. If it's a citizens group, it has to be a citizens group, it continues the effort.
As we saw how many times Tom Dixon wanted to recuse himself for not.
Right, exactly, like, there's just, this is a tricky subject, and even if there are people on the select board who agreed with this. They're taking a neutral stance, right? And that's probably. The best way for them to do that. I just, I. I just don't see that this is something that should go back to town meeting. I think the education level is there. And when I read read the report, I think there's one word that we, like, you wrote, we thoroughly did not convince enough voters of this case. I sort of changed the wording to say we did not have enough time to educate. And I mean, you're saying the same thing, but. I I really think not having that draft charter to. Even our public sessions, we were like, whoa, we don't have the draft charter yet. Sure, we're thinking this, we're thinking that. There's too much wishy washy and even the education we pushed out. That if you weren't really strong about it, I can see how people would just say no, and I think that's. Some, somebody's gonna really, who has the time, I wish I did, to really take this and. Move with it. And the different groups outside of a government structure.
Are you submitting these to Joe as recommendation?
I'm just giving him my list of some added weaknesses. I don't know how to. I'm just giving him my list of some added weaknesses. I don't know how to go about it. If I, if I spend the time doing it now, I don't know if it's worth it, but.
Just either email me or, or give it to me and I'll, I'll edit them in.
And I'm, I mean, I could redline it since you gave this to us in Word and send it to the whole group, but I don't want it to be an open meeting law violation either. So I don't know what the, I. Don't know the best way to.
Send it to me, send it to me. I'll, I'll blend them in, obviously, I. Since I can't believe I made any typos of, of.
It's only name. You forgot the T in Caroline's last name, and I'm pretty sure Malcolm's last name is McNabb, Nat McCall.
Yes, that's correct.
Donna, you've been sitting there patiently.
Um, I just wanna say that the committee did an amazing job and I think. You all should be very proud of all the effort. Um, and work in detail you put into this. Um, as far as, you know, education, that is important, but we have to remember the other side of this coin. Is that this is revolutionary to some people. I mean, people were, I was listening to the, um. The public forums that you all had. And people were just like recordings. They got up and said the same thing, right, Joe? At, at, at two of the, you know, two meetings, one right after the other. Um, it's going to take time, so I think. Everybody should be proud. Of what was done, what was discussed and, um, and maybe propose something open-ended. Um, at the very end so that. The idea lives.
All right, well, thank you, Donna. Um, thank you, and I, I should say, thank all of you for the time that you've spent and, uh, you had the good thoughts, the good ideas, um. You know, I, I found it to be a fascinating process, I mean, to, to, to work at this level and try to create something for the town and. You know, hopefully we've moved the ball along the field or whatever metaphor you wanna use and, um. Some other folks can pick it up and go forward, so. Um. Take, you know, finally, again, Rachel, send me that stuff or give it to me now. Any other comments, edits people have, email them to me. I'll blend it all into the, uh. Uh, into the main draft, if you will, send it all, send it out over the next, probably next couple of days. Um, and then my game plan would be to make sure it all looks nice and pretty and get it to Libby and the select board. If I can get it done before I leave for New York on, on the week, over the weekend, I will, otherwise it'll be. Sometime over the next weekend.
Would you be expected to present this to the select board as a final report?
If they asked me to, certainly I would, you know. I'd ask you to come along.
Uh, I would say too, if you, if people think it appropriate for another vote, we can always do a quick, just Zoom meeting, just do all remote meeting. To just approve.
Okay.
Space, we can set the timer. Show up for five minutes.
Yeah. Terrific, um. It's all I got. Any other?
Thank, thank you to the chair for. A lot of work.
It was great to work with everybody and it was, it was a lot of fun. I mean. Sure, it's nice when work is fun, so.
And now, and now each of us knows way, way, way more than we did about how the governance does work on Nantucket. Except for maybe some of you guys who had expertise, but I know I learned a lot more and so that gives us a citizens. Um, you know, an extra, an extra lens into how things are going in the meantime.
It was very enriching. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Well, um, thank you all so much and I'm sure I'll see you around at the, at the Stop and Shop or whatever, um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some, some second.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.